I have an agenda for Monday night and a few thoughts you want to share with us.
Yeah, just the potential things that I have for the agenda for Monday night. That's when we'll be holding a public hearing for Sakura. That'll be the first thing that we do. That's just, you know, it's been ran in the paper and they're wanting to apply for their restaurant liquor license. And then I don't know if you know where it's at, it's where... Across from the courthouse on the corner, kind of across from...
That was a message church.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one of the Mexican restaurants was there, so that will be the first thing we do Monday night.
Well, I want to ask something about that.
Okay.
Are those liquor places like that not supposed to be so far from the church?
There's five lanes between it and the church.
You gotta have a major highway.
That's the difference.
That's the...
That four-lane road between them is the exception to that rule.
There are players between the church and the place that sells the alcohol according to our ordinance, I believe.
Okay.
It's been licensed twice.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I wondered about it before.
And then we'll have, of course, approving the minutes. And one thing we're adding on there, and I put a job description in y'all's paperwork for the part-time library worker.
Library aide.
Yes, that's what, you know, Star had asked for, for the library.
Where do you put you?
We'll be approving that Monday.
Oh, no doubt.
The other thing will be the longevity pay. That will be on there. You know, it's what we do every year. It's kind of longevity Christmas bonus. That'll be on there for y'all to vote on to approve Monday night. And that's all.
Also, we just received a request for a zoning change in our properties in the area, I guess, immediately behind Alabama Powers' old office and First National Bank, going past the Jennings house down the hill. One of our property owners is wanting to build some duplexes, I understand it, and it's about three acres rezoned for consideration. Zoning board will meet till the 25th. It won't be on this agenda. But after the zoning board meets, they'll be making recommendation to board, to council, about the findings. And I did speak to Troy Moore this morning. We're getting a zoning committee meeting called together for the 25th. That'll be probably six o'clock on the 25th. Last Monday is their normal meeting time if they've got business to attend to. So we'll be considering that.
Can I ask you a question while you're out there?
Yeah.
We're about, sir, you're speaking up now, Kevin.
All right. There's a street that dead ends out there. You go past, between First National Bank and the Sonic, I guess, the old Empire lot, and go all the way out past the Jennings house, and it'd be out in there.
Where Ms. Jennings used to live down the end of that street. Now, there's still some houses down there, and this has come up before, I think. And how do those people down there feel about this?
That's why there'll be a committee.
The zoning board will meet, and then depending on what they say, it'll have to run in the paper, and there'll be a public hearing, and then it'll be a whole... So it isn't gonna happen anytime real soon.
There's a description of the property.
We'd have to approve, is that right?
Are any houses down that end of that street?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's...
That's where the Gooseby's lived and down there.
Yeah, right there. They lived on the right.
Yeah, and then there's another house across from them, and I think somebody else has built another house under there. I hadn't been down there. It used to be a real pretty lot down there. Yeah.
So who owns this?
Joe Logan.
And he's the one that's made the request?
He's made the request and submitted his fees to have the hearing.
Joel Logan. Is that what you said?
Joel Logan.
That's Steve's son.
Yeah. It mentions, it mentions in the request can duplex or townhomes or new mobile homes go on this property. And we're trying to establish if it's...
Have you come out of mobile home park?
I'm thinking it's probably zoned as residential.
Yes.
Single-family residential, but I'm not positive.
If he's wanting to do a mobile home park, that would be a separate application. So what do you want it changed to?
I guess that's to be determined, but...
Yeah.
I mean, well...
No, you better watch it.
The housing authority, ah, the housing authority, the zoning board, he'll have to request, if he's wanting it made FAR, or if he's wanting it, you know, what he's wanting it made, but they'll have to decide. All that'll be decided before it comes to us.
Yeah. I imagine he'll come to that meeting, I'm not sure.
Somebody's wanted to put a mobile home park down there about 10 years ago, or more or something. And that's what I figured he's into doing. And them picture ain't gonna be next.
Do you know very much about this request, Angela?
I don't, honestly, I don't. I think it had been forwarded on to Marla and Amy, and of course today is Marla's last day, so...
Yeah, we're trying to get a new person set up for her zoning questions, and that would be Sheila Perdino. She's planning to take on that role for us, and Marla's gonna be leaving us.
Well, when he meets with the zoning board the end of the month, then he'll make the request and say if he's wanting it FAR, if he's, you know, what he's wanting to do on it.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll...
So there's just, what, three acres?
I believe it. The survey says it's 3.52 acres. It's been called a five-acre spot, but the survey didn't reveal that much land. And it's being advertised as three acres more or less, and so it's kind of a, you know, I don't know how much of the land is usable. I understand it backs up the Rose Hill Creek. I don't know if it's a barrier that would have, you'd have to consume flood or anything like that.
But I think that's been put up before for mobile home parks.
It's just a branding request that came in today, and we'll be having the zoning board meet on it and come forward to us at a later date to make a recommendation. Did you have anything else specific?
No, just those few things that were coming up about the longevity pay. And then I also put a copy of the holidays that we talked about for 2020. I put a copy of those. We'll have to vote on those in December, but I wanted y'all to kind of look at them and see if anything jumped out at you.
Holidays are listed. If you have any questions concerning holidays, let Angela know before we bring it up for a vote. Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be on these premises on the evening of the 19th, 6:00 p.m. There'll be several children involved in the program, like there were last year. We'll have our new tree up and ready to light. I hope y'all can come and see it in all its glory.
What time?
Six o'clock. And it'll be about one hour, a little more program will be in. The building will be locked. It'll be outside only to the public. And we might bring a porta potty in in case somebody needs to go. We're not gonna have to go to nothing, so it won't be a long ceremony, so maybe we won't get that in time. But we're gonna try to make sure that they're okay while they're here. Rodney had to be gone today. I wanted him to be here when we talk about this. I don't want us to finalize our thoughts on it. But we talked some last year about the possibility of making some slight adjustments in the water rates and a fairly significant adjustment in our sewer rates to get us a little more at a break even on our operations. Like this month, I believe we, what, put $50,000 into the water department, I don't know, they pulled yesterday.
So far.
And we're still having to supplement them a good bit to keep them afloat. I'd like to see us consider trying to bring our revenues up a little bit on that. We considered some things last year that never did act on. 1% water increase would help the revenues by $15,000. And if we made an increase on our sewer rates from 50% of the water bill to 80%, we would probably increase the revenue by $114,000 a year. So... Just something we want to think about. I'd like to get a little more in discussion with Rodney here at our next work session so we can maybe give it full consideration. This last week, he had a major breakdown in our clay lines. Collapsed down here at the apartments across from the hospital. He even had to call in some reserve help to get it fixed. Had a manhole completely backed up, wouldn't flow at all. And Green and... Our local gentleman, Baggett, pumped all day and most of the night down there pumping out the manhole and carrying it and putting it further down the line back into the system for us. They've rendered their services free. Of course, we let them dump their sewer into our system, and that's the trade-off we got. If we need them, we call them, and they come and help us. And then we let them, when they pump a septic tank, we let them dump their stuff that they've collected, and we process it for them. But if we call them, they come, and they came and stayed a long time and helping us out. We caused some guys out of Hailville. They had a good machine. The line was 12 foot deep, deeper than anything we got to dig with, we dig. They brought a tractor, and they got about 120 feet of sewer line replaced it between the two manholes. We couldn't get any flow till we replaced that line. We don't have the bill for that yet.
How much you talking about raising the water rates?
1% increase.
1% wouldn't be enough.
Well, that would, that would not be enough, but if we did 1% a year and start with 1% and make it automatic every year that we do 1%.
That would be, we'll be here to be somebody else that raises up there what we need. We don't break ourselves, we're not careful here of what we're doing. And all this other stuff that we take them on.
We had another situation with the water department. We filed it on our insurance and got denied. Rodents ate the wiring, built nests in one of our major pumps at a lift station, and ate the wiring completely off the motor and shorted it out. And we filed that on insurance. It's $32,000, and we're not gonna get a penny for that. They've got, they've got a clause in their insurance that if it's done by rodents, insects, birds, that kind of thing, it's not covered under our policy.
Well, it looks like 5%. I know my bill's usually $50, but I would make it $2.50 and half, and they will, if mine's $50, most people regularly have, they're not gonna be that much to them yet. I wouldn't think, I think mine'd be about as much as anybody.
Well, that's, it's something that I think we should really consider. We've not done anything with our sewer rates in a long, long time. Right at the beginning of this administration, we did some adjustments. I think it'd been nine, 10, 11, maybe years. I think we did an adjustment when we first took office in this administration for the water bills, but we still didn't get us up to a break even on our water operation.
Well, you just can't do that. This is a business that we're running. And I know some people, I mean, some, not many people can't pay a extra dollar or two if... And that's all you're speaking of, that most people are like mine. And most people, I don't think, be as much as mine.
Yeah.
Are you on sale?
Yeah. Yeah, on sewer end.
The ones, the ones that have...
Take bath once a week.
The people who have sewer would be affected more than ones that just have water service. Of course, you, what we've had is your sewer bill's half of your water, so we'd be going from 50% on, to maybe 60, or in the case of the business, up to 80% of your water bill would be taxed on as your sewer bill. So we have some areas around us that charge 100%. Whatever your water bill is, your sewer bill's equal for that. So just something we need to think about. We're way below the break even point on our water operation.
How much we gonna have to raise it if we got up to break even?
We'd probably...
Probably 5%.
If we, if we adjust, if we adjust the water bill as much as Jean's mentioned, 5%, and then follow it up with an increase on our sewer, we might get us close to a break even, you know? That's, we have not achieved that in many, many years. We've never, we've never had a water department that could handle its own bills. It was much greater than that when we were paying, when the water department had the burden of the bond payment. But the bond payment's gone, but we're still not at a break even position on our operation. One of the major reasons on our, this wastewater treatment plant, the power bill's around $30,000 a month just to put one of those pumps down there. So it's, it's hard when you got that kind of outlay of, that's just a fixed expense. You can't get away from that. We have to run those big numbers to take care of all that sludge and that system that we run down there. We might could get a, just a water treatment and water situation at a break even, excluding the wastewater treatment plant with a 5% raise, I think we could see. And we may have to...
Take the money out of the general fund to pay somebody's water bill. I can't do that. That's what I'm talking about. Well, most people sitting here like we are, that's been here before, they're all running again or running for something again. And they don't want to make everybody mad. And they just go ahead and don't, won't pass something that needs to be like, I don't want to pay for what I use, you know, and what it costs the city. And then everybody else should too.
It's just too great a burden for the general fund. And the paper illustrated it today, of what we have done is we've adopted a negative budget as far as our expenditures this year and things that keep bleeding from our general fund as our water operation. And we're supplementing it a lot, so that's why I just think we need to consider getting it more to a break even.
I don't think it's right to do that. Everybody, if they want it cheaper, they can quit using so much water. Wasting water in their yard, you know, go to the creek, run the line.
That's...
Some people do, you know, they're effective. Or make them spring, dig out a whale. You have to dig them away, I would do it, yeah.
I really want to, of course, to think on this, start talking to Rodney. I want each one of you to have a conversation with Rodney. He's not able to be here today, and he hated, had to go, but he's got a lot of sickness in his family right now. Sister broke her leg and all this stuff, and he's having to help with the family matters today. But he wants to be here and be a part of this conversation when we make a real decision. He understands where the expenses are, and I just think we're gonna have to make some adjustments.
If you think about $2.50, how many people sitting here of us don't waste $2.50 every day, at least every week that you could do without? Some people drink liquor, some people drink beer, you know, table, just a little of that. Some people drink Coca-Cola, and don't think they don't add up, and they're not... You know, $2.50 is not much money anymore.
No, it's not.
I mean, even for you, it's not much. But we, I mean, we've got to...
Well, that's just, just a subject I wanted to lay on the table today to thought. We need to, we need each of us to have a conversation with Rodney. We'll, we'll let him talk to us jointly then, and if you have questions of him, he'll get you the answers. I don't think he'll deny that something needs to be done. Rodney's not wanting to have to ask the city for all this, but when something breaks in his department, it costs a lot of money to fix it. A lot of money.
Well, that's just like the budget we just adopted. I wasn't looking for that because we adopted a budget that was way over what we, our figures show that we'll bring in. Well, that's not good business. The good business is to have the money there to pay for it, if that's what it's gonna cost. And that hasn't been happening, like you said, because people can give them water, and we're paying for part of it. I mean, if they're not paying for it, it's costing the city to put it out there. And you can't just keep on and on giving stuff away.
Well, we, we probably won't have as many special projects. We're fixing that road down there, and we think revenue's gonna follow that trail, and we'll start picking up revenue where we're fixing the road down there for loves. The garbage truck, something we're gonna do late in the year. It'll be probably billed in the, the next calendar year, or possibly two budgets down the road before we actually pay a bill on the garbage truck. Those are just some big-ticket items that we're gonna have to get. Finishing paying for our rec center is just part of, you know, that's something we wanted to do and do right. And the rec center has turned out really good. The contract did us a good job. Costs more than we anticipated because of that rotten cement and a few other things. We're, we're about through with all that stuff and... I've been trying to get the final bill. Andrew was supposed to get that for me sometime this week.
I haven't seen the final, final bill, but it's over $3 million, I think.
Over $3 million?
I think that's right.
For what?
The whole project ran over $3 million on the rec center renovations.
Boy, I thought you bid it off for $2.5 million. Would that went to bid?
I'd have to go get that file. It was 2.5 or 2.8.
Yeah, I knew it.
It's, it's close to 2.8s with the bid. We ran into $300,000 or something thousand worth of rotten cement, and that thing, we didn't know was there when we started. The thing was bid as a value bid, and when those contractors come in there and replace that rotten cement, that was $300,000 in more unexpected expense on...
And they didn't know it?
No. The allowance on the, on the contract was to take out the rotten cement was around $35,000. And when they, when they got here to inspecting the building and chipping away at that stuff, it's $300,000 or something thousand just to take care of the cement that was out there.
I believe, I thought most, I thought most people, they looked at all of that before they made a bid, and when they made a bid, whatever they ran into, it wasn't our fault. Did they have that written in the contract?
Yeah, all those things that were hidden were value bid, and, you know, that's on a cost basis.
See, there we are, hit there with $300,000, and say again, and we're sitting here talking about a 5% on paying for sewer and stuff for you.
But that's the first renovation, Jean, that building's had 44 years.
I know, I know that, I know that, but still, you know, if I was a contractor, if I contracted a house or something, well, whatever it was, that's what I had to do it for. It didn't matter if I got in there and it had whatever it had. I had to go ahead. I'm supposed to know what I'm doing when I do it. Supposed to go inspect it and have, you know, and then that's my price. I have to do it. That's just the way it works. I lost money, I lost money.
We've, we've got this, we've got these things to, we've got these things to consider and... What's your name?
Hello. Hello? Just tell him you're fire-wracking. Everyone's ever seen a chick when he can. He's already cut off.
I don't think you could get one out of me. We will, we will get the report from the zoning committee before we act on the request for rezoning. And we'll hear what kind of zoning is being requested, whether it's, we're able to do it or not able to do it. We won't move forward on that. We'll come back to this rates thing when Rodney can be here with us. Like I'm saying, if any of you have questions with Rodney, talk to him, ask him to get you some answers. In my opinion, we're gonna have to make some adjustments. It's just, I'll let, I'll let y'all help me set how much the adjustments need to be.
Well, I bet you can put money on it to build a mobile home park down there.
That's, that's something we'll need to figure out and see what the, what the deal is. I guess it's all just residential down there now. I'm not so positive about it, but the...
There's Logan, wasn't it? Yeah, you know, that, that has come up before, that's gonna put a mobile home since a few years back. Pretty down in there. Yeah. Somebody was gonna put a mobile home park down there. I don't worry if I lives in the Gooseby house or that, across the street either. I don't know. Yeah, that may be the end of the road. Yeah, I haven't been down there in a long time. Pretty down in there. Pretty bad in there.
Junior sold it out, did he?
Yeah, it's...
I don't, I don't believe he sold it, Dan Tucker.
Angela, you got anything else to say?
No, sir.
Well, thank y'all for coming, we'll, we'll, uh, meet Monday night, take care of the business at hand, we got a little business coming up, um, later that we'll see into. Let's consider what we're doing with our water department and what we need to do going forward. We're going the whole, all the way. At this point. Thank y'all.